African, who wants to study abroad second semester. Well, this is the, because he's a semester, he's a semester head. All the classes that he wants to study abroad are ones that are offered for him first semester.
Can he, can he go in the fall instead?
He doesn't want to, because the fall's.
We're good, okay.
Choices, choices.
Good evening, welcome to the June 18th, 2025 meeting of the East Bridgewater School Committee. I will take a motion to open the meeting.
Motion to open.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will start with the pledge of allegiance. Want to stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome our new assistant superintendent, Mrs. McPartland. Welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then we're going to go a little bit out of order. We have a group of faculty members and students here, so.
Sure. So we have Mr. Ferrioli and Mr. Stevens. I should turn it over to Mr. Shea because he helped do a lot of the coordination. And they're here with students to present on the robotics competition that they were in. When was the competition?
May it please.
Great. So they're here to share what they presented in the competition.
Well, we're going to actually get a physical display of the, alright.
I guess anybody from the cameras.
Great.
Yes.
Alright, so about a year ago, some students approached me about starting the robotics club. We had some leftover robotics stuff from a few years ago when we taught it in the middle school. And so I started up and Mr. Ferrioli found out about it and talked about it and wanted to be part of it. And in great addition, the two of us sort of like narrowed and went. The first year was basically just building some pretty basic robots and kits that were sort of left over, as I said. And then last year, we sort of decided to step it up a little bit. And Andrew and Tim were a big, big part of that. We tried to take part in competition that was major for the robotics club.
Yeah, I have a friend who teaches at the Oakmont Regional in Aspen, Massachusetts. And he hosts the Vex Robotics Competition. So Vex Robotics is the name of the company that supplies all of this stuff. And it's basically just a retro set, but it's a retro set with like detailed instructions and, but a lot of modifications that can be done. The products that they have is, they demonstrate what you can do with these robots. Anyway, my friend has been hosting for 15 years and they host competitions. And for a long time since I've been a teacher, he's been like, you guys should buy these robots, you should come up, you should do this, just build a robot, just come up, it's super fun, it's super fun. And hemming and hawing, hemming and hawing. Well, finally, we did it this year. And in hindsight, yes, we should have done it a long time ago, because it was super fun. There is a whole world ranking to these competitions. This specific competition is after all of the world ranking events. So it's more of just a, let's go have fun, and it's more of a bragging rights kind of competition. But everybody loves it because it's no pressure, right? And so everybody that's there, everybody was helping us out, we had some questions, we had, you know, I need this part, oh, come over here, we have parts for you. Everybody was super welcoming, all they wanted to do was help. They want your robot to work just so you can compete. They don't care if you win, you lose, I mean, you want to win, but whatever, you know, so. And so we did it, and it was quite a long day, it was an hour and a half drive from here, you know, one way, right? So, but we went up and we did it, and the kids had a blast, and you know, it was five bucks, they feed you everything, which is great. And so, we didn't know anything at all, what we were getting ourselves into. This is a base level robot, basically what they tell you to do, and then from there, it's up to you to make it your own. Well, what if we did this? You can do whatever you want, as long as you use their parts, right? And you can modify their parts and whatever. And so, we learned the hard way, what you'll find out in just a second here, that, you know, just because it's a robot that will compete in the competition, it can do a small part of the competition. It's up to you to modify the robot to be able to do more of the competition than what this robot is supposed to do. So, we ran into a few issues, and you guys feel free to have the floor.
So, what it is for the competition, the robot was very basic. It could do only like this, it could pick up the ring, and it would carry it, and that's about it. So, the competition needs to make a bunch of changes to it. Our first issue, if you want to turn the robot, it's very demonstrated. We ran into the motors. Our arm string, one of the goals is to have an arm that can climb up the slide and hang here. So once the competition ends, the robot can hang there and get a plus five points. Our robot can do that. So, what we added off our robot is these elastics right here, they hold the arm down when the motors aren't active, which is very interesting, fixed and it works. So there's it picking up the ring, and then it pushes the ring off. It might be broken.
So what, what made you figure out that the elastics were counter like to making sure that it was working the way that you wanted it to?
So, the way the competition works is your robot comes into this kind of circuit, and once the timer is up for the certain, like, competition round, your robot shuts off and leaves. And so the gravity of this post right there, as it's pulled up. It would be like this before the competition.
Okay.
And then when it ends, that would happen.
Okay.
So, we just kept putting on stronger and stronger elastics until we could stay like this for the entirety of the time, and then we earned those points.
Again, it doesn't grasp.
Yeah. And it seemed to be lost the last.
Oh, no. No, he's got.
So it's not again, right? It's off now, but it's still just barely off the ground. I think that, they're different elastics from what we used to compete with. Yeah. That is what we did in order to get our points, and it barely got us to 12th place out of 30 for our first time, which is very impressive.
That's, that's fantastic. It sounds like problem solving was a big, you know, kind of a big concept to work through while you were there?
Yeah, it was. So, we were one of the teams that we just lost the first few rounds because our robot was just falling apart in Aspen. But at the competition, we had this working robot, which is the best.
Are we going to see you guys in years ahead, you know, smashing up other robots and things of that nature?
Hopefully.
Maybe we should try to help from here.
Battle box.
Talk about, we added the elastics to fix the problem, but what problem could we create by adding the elastics?
Oh, yes, by adding the elastics. So one of our other problems that we had was when it was not hanging, robot arms couldn't outlet, so we just wanted to disassemble the elastic. So what we did is, we had one motor that was already on the robot. And then because of this elastic problem, we had a second motor, and we kind of reversed it so that it dealt with strength, it gave the arm, and then it pulled the elastic perfectly.
That's great.
Yeah.
Is this another one of the team members?
Tyler was out of person. I'm glad to know.
Excellent.
Awesome.
And these are both our drivers, kind of switched off throughout the competition.
So you guys battling for time with the remote control, I would imagine?
Well, they had like, they had like, they made it so that you can, there was two controllers, and you could control the parts of the robots. So it did that a little bit.
That's fantastic.
I see some engineering in your future. Very nice.
What was really, I think what played the best part is, we go there, and you have this robot, and you have all these ideas, but there's 10 other schools there, there's 32 other robots there, and see everybody's thought, and like, what their angle was, and what they put into it. So, and so the robots are very, very complex, which is cool to see, and sort of, you know, for future years, really, we have the possibility, pretty much, I don't know, so. Yeah, the new competition is already out, and so people are, you know, the whole idea is, yeah, we can, we can come up with our own stuff, but there's so many other competitions that happen throughout the year, and people post YouTube videos, and you get to see around the world what people are doing. I mean, there might be some stealing of ideas over there.
Farly.
Taking inspiration.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're excited for the future of this, because I think now we've done this once. I mean, it was already at the end of the year, some interest from all the students, and once they find out about it, it's like, I think it's only going to be in traction. And since we're on record here, I do have to give credit to Mr. Chilcott, because this was his inspiration way long ago, with some grant money to get all these robotics stuff. We've had it for a long time. It's just now we're starting to really work with it, you know, and we have tons of stuff down there, which is, which is awesome, because I think, no matter who we get, maybe it's people moving forward, we, so, there's probably always going to be something that we need, so. Yeah, very grateful. Yeah, thank you. I mean, there was a lot of the signup stuff, I mean, it was kind of last minute, but John, you were very helpful on that, so.
Mr. Ferrioli, Mr. Stevens, thank you so much for taking the leap, and, and just, sometimes you just got to jump, right?
Yeah.
And I'm so happy, I can see how happy you guys are by taking that jump, and Tyler, and Andrew, and Tim, am I right? Guys, fantastic, that is unbelievable, congratulations, you guys did an amazing job. Thank you for representing East Bridgewater and doing us proud. We're looking forward to even more cool things from you in the future.
The pressure is on for what you're coming back this year with.
No pressure.
Such a great collaboration, physics and our tech ed and manufacturing, so putting those two together to provide these opportunities for our students, so, it's great. What grade levels?
So, how much do you hear you're going to senior this year? And, yeah.
Going into ninth. Great, so we've still got some years ahead.
Perfect. Nice. That's fantastic, absolutely fantastic. Very cool.
Congratulations. Good job. Thanks so much.
Great job, guys. Thank you so much.
And coming off your summer vacation to be here.
I heard it. Okay, very cool.
Okay, I do not believe we have anyone here for public comment. And the high school student advisory council rep was unable to be here this evening, so we will jump right into the superintendent's corner.
Great. So first is just a recap of graduation. The weather held out, it was a great evening for graduation. Mr. Pika was there to speak on behalf of the school committee, and everything went really well. I think we were about an hour and a half, so we were, the quality was there, as well as the efficiency, and it went off really well. So, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, I thought it was awesome to hand out the diplomas to all the students with Ellen, and I, I thought it was just so well-run, very efficient, to your point, and just so impressed with, actually, all the students, and seeing the excitement and the love from their family was just really great, and congratulations to you on.
Thank you.
Your son graduating.
Yeah, the speakers, I mean, the student, all the student essays had really good words to say to their classmates, so.
Yes, and the guest speaker was excellent.
He was.
And Mr. Silva said he already has next year's commencement speaker lined up, so he's on top of it.
Perfect.
Next, end of the year school activities, so I'm going to turn that over to Mrs. McPartland.
So last Tuesday, the summer reading requirements went out to all families, that's for students entering pre-K through 12. It is a requirement here for that the students do summer reading, and in most cases, they're being asked to read a selection or a book, or be read to or listened to a book, and then there's going to be an activity they complete over the summer, or it's preparation work for them to be ready for either writing activity or some other sort of activity when they return to school. We also sent paper copies home to students pre-K through six, but it's on our website for the whole summer. So we'll also send out a reminder in August, just to, you know, put that little, you know, little reminder for some who might not have started it right away. We're also encouraging students to take part in the public library program, because that's something we try to endorse every year, it just goes above and beyond.
Do they still do the, the little bingo cards that you used to do a long time ago?
They're not doing the bingo card this year, no, no, but that was, that was a popular one.
It was.
Yeah. Something else going on this summer is, we have been able for a number of years to support teachers who want to go above and beyond with grant-supported projects, that is either to enhance our current curriculum or the practices that we're working on. So this summer, we have about 30 staff members who are working on different projects that range from any sort of math instruction, writing has been a big focus this year, and will continue next year, and they're going to be working on those topics. We also have people working on the grade two cultural program, and also our DEI team is going to be preparing their back-to-school presentations and prepping for the new year, and what their programming will be for that year. And then finally, today, a parent square message went out for our Start Strong program. It was formerly called the Jump Start program, and that's for students entering K-3, 7, and 9. And it's a morning we're going to have August 20th, it's a Wednesday, and that's where those students have a chance to come in and tour the school, acclimate themselves to the building, meet some of the teachers and staff. They'll do a bunch of activities, and it's really about getting them comfortable for either entering that new building or new grade level, that might be a big jump. We have a lot of staff members, we're fully staffed at each building, we had staff apply to work it, so we're, we're ready to go for August 20th. Signups are going to be, go out the week of August 4th, and that will have our new enrollments already set to go, and then there's no limit on the students that attend, we want any of the students entering those grades to be able to attend, we're just going to be asking for an RSVP so that we can plan appropriately and know who will be joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And although the year ended a little unusual, with different buildings ending on different days, we are, have officially ended the school year. The junior, senior high school and the Mitchell School ended last Friday, and Central School's last day was yesterday. So we had lots of, we had red carpet treatment for preschool, we had sixth grade promotion ceremonies, eighth grade promotional ceremonies, concerts, field days, so it was the big wind-up for the slowdown. So schools are officially closed at this point. Summer hours in all the buildings are eight to two until the, I believe it's August 18th is the Monday, where office hours will go back to their, their regular business hours. As far as central office, I'll share later with you my goals for the school year, and I'll be working with the administrative team, the directors and the principals about developing their goals for the school year, directly aligned to our district improvement plan. So I'll be sharing that. The MASSS and the MASCE Summer Institute, I'll be attending that this summer. The first part of that is my new superintendent's induction seminar, so I'll spend Monday there for that, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is all superintendents in Massachusetts professional development. So I'll be down there for those dates in July. And lastly, school building committee update, we had our third forum on June 12th. We had two in-person forums. The attendance was okay, we had maybe the first time about 20 participants, it was a little less the second time, so we decided this third time to do a virtual forum. We had about six. Outside of the building committee, there's 16 of us, so it looked like a lot of people on the call. So, still trying to figure out ways that we can reach the community to give them information about the building project. We're trying to go to as many outreach opportunities as possible. We were at the Little League Fields a couple weeks ago, last night we had a table at Dale and the Duds. We'll be at the multicultural festival, which is happening on June 29th on the Common, and we do have upcoming meeting dates, which are all public for the community to participate. So, we're going to keep getting the word out, sharing information, hopefully taking feedback as much as we can, so that we factor that into the decision-making as we move forward. Today, we did have an MSBA board meeting, where they were voting on how far we are in our schematic design, so we got full approval of the board to keep going in the direction we are. It was verified that we are going to be a pre-K to two building, with enrollment for K to two being 510. Right now, we're just shy of 400 students, K to two, not including, we have about 120 preschoolers. MSBA doesn't factor preschool in, so certainly leaving that flexibility for growth as we develop and design a new school building. We have little postcards that we've developed, which is easy for us to hand out when we're at events. It's got the QR code that leads people to our website. Website has all of our meeting dates, our agendas, our minutes, all the design plans that have been developed up to this point, and our schedule for the entire project. So there's, I believe, eight modules in the whole process, from beginning, getting approval to enter into a feasibility study, all the way up to completion of construction. And we're at module four right now, so we're almost at the halfway point with looking at the timeframe of submitting our finalized schematic design in August, so that we have from August till about November to fully share with the community what the building will look like, the approximation of the cost for the building, so that people can be fully informed when they go to town meeting and ultimately go to an election to decide on funding and approval for a building. And if all goes well, then we would be looking at potentially 12 months for final, going out to bid for construction, getting our final plans in place, and having the school building project taking about 18 to 20 months, with an opening of September 2028. So, we are on target for all of that to happen, and I will certainly keep the committee updated. One thing I did want to bring to the committee's attention is, with Mr. McKinnon no longer being on the school committee, he's going to remain on the building committee as a community member, but right now, Mr. Pika is the only school committee representative on the building committee, so if the committee wanted to entertain the possibility of adding a second school committee member. And that's all I have.
Did you, were you able to talk to a lot of people at Dale and the Duds?
We did, it was, it was nice that Dale made a couple of announcements for us. It wasn't, and, and Mr. Ferri was there, so he can speak to it as well. I don't feel it was as well-attended as it has been in the past, and maybe a couple of factors, I don't know if weather played a factor. Also, the last day of school having been Friday for two of our three buildings, that might have contributed to it, but as people walked by, we were strategically placed from the lawn to the food truck, so they actually had to pass by us. So we did, you know, certainly get some opportunities to talk with people who either hadn't heard about it at all, or had heard about it, but hadn't seen any of the design, so we had some visuals there for that as well.
How many total, and you might not have this answer, but how many different outreaches have we tried so far?
So, as far, we've had three forums already, and then as far as events, we've been at Christmas on the Common, we have gone to Little League games, we've been at school parent conference days, we were at Dale and the Duds, we'll be at the multi, we're looking to go any and every opportunity. We have made connections with the community center, so we're working on securing a date where we'll go down to the community center and talk to our senior citizens, but we have a subcommittee for communications, and we meet every week at noon, just to kind of talk about what are the new opportunities that have come up in the community, that we can possibly have some FaceTime with, or groups that we can be put in front of, so, looking for any and all opportunities.
Is the library, this is just an idea.
Board of Library Trustees, that meeting, we met with them maybe two weeks ago.
So there's been at least a dozen outreaches.
Parent Square Messages, anytime there are forums or updates, so.
Maybe if there was, if there's an activity that's going on at the library, if there's like a, I don't know what they have going on right now, but if they had anything big over the summer, maybe piggyback.
Yeah, we'll definitely have to make a connection with the new director to make sure that we know of events that are happening. Certainly, when we have open houses to start the school year for Central School and Mitchell School, those would be really good opportunities to put some information in front of families.
Thank you. Thanks for putting in the effort.
Hopefully, it's all worthwhile.
I hope.
Okay. We will move into reports and discussions, so we already saw the robotics competition. Next, on July 14th at 6:00 PM, there's a joint meeting between the select board and the school committee to fill the vacant school committee seat. As of today, we have three individuals who applied, and I'll also announce tonight that today, we were informed, unfortunately, Amy Berry needs to resign from the school committee. We thank Amy for her time that she served, and her contributions to the committee, wish her the best, and so I will be notifying the select board on Friday, because tomorrow's a holiday, of that vacancy, and hopefully we can get this all done in one night. One other thing I wanted to talk about, just quickly, when I met with Gina last week, I know traditionally, the school committee doesn't meet during July, and to me, it just seems we should. There's still business going on, the central office is still on, I know that we need to have a full-blown agenda, but there's payroll warrants to be signed, a payable warrant, so I'd like to add like a half-hour meeting prior to the interviews, if everyone can make that at 5:30 on the 14th. I know you're coming up from the Cape, does that work okay for you, Gina? Yeah, okay, alright. Any thoughts on that?
I agree, we probably could use a meeting at that point in time.
Yeah.
Where we already have a meeting with the select board as well.
Yeah.
It makes perfect sense to kind of have a reduced version of a school committee meeting at that point in time. I'm certainly available for it.
Okay, thank you.
I still owe you the athletic fee analysis, too, so maybe we can do that then.
Sure, yeah.
Just like a plan.
Yeah, thank you. There's business to be done, right?
Absolutely.
So, next we have ClearGov, so this is a contract extension.
So, I brought this up. I sent an email to the, to the school committee about, about ClearGov. I think for the next couple of years, we need to really focus on wants versus needs. I, I look at this program, it's a very good program, it gives you a wealth of information. It, it does make my job a little easier if I'm looking up things, but for the year, it had 365 visits, you know, about 75 to 100 of them were probably mine. The cost right now is 5,200, it's going up to 7,900, and then, and then the year after that, it's going up to $10,000. I mean, I'm happy to continue with the, with the product, if you, if you think it's worthwhile, but I think, you know, over, as we continue in '26 and '27, things like this, I'm going to continue to bring up to you to, so we make an informed decision, and it's not just me renewing a contract because we've had it.
John, how many times did you say it got visited?
365.
What would, why, why would people be visiting the site outside of yourself?
If they want to see what, how we compare expense-wise to other school districts.
Is that not available for free on?
to continue to bring up to you to, so we make an informed decision, and it's not just me renewing a contract because we've had it.
John, how many times did you say it got visited?
365.
What would, why, why would people be visiting the site outside of yourself?
If they want to see what, how we compare expense-wise to other school districts.
Is that not available for free on Desi's website?
All this information is available elsewhere.
Okay.
What this product does, it just takes all the different sources and puts it all into one program. You can get it at a click of a button.
Okay. How much more difficult does it make your job to not have this?
I, I wouldn't be presenting it if I thought it would, if I thought it would. It's not really going to make my job more difficult.
Okay.
A little bit of added time, but.
And you said you visited it 100 times?
Seventy, probably 75 to 100.
So, I mean, if you call it 100, it's 70, $79 a visit, essentially. For you, I'm not saying, not quite sure who else is using it, but 365 times, you know, it's $21.65. That's for the 7,500 for that particular year. So, I mean, just trying to break it down in small portions.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'd rather spend the money elsewhere.
Yeah. No, I, I thank you for bringing it up. I, I agree with you.
I'll make a motion. Do I, do we need to make a motion on this, or?
I don't think so.
I think we just don't renew it. Yeah. Okay.
There you go.
Fair enough.
And that will lead right into the business financial report from Mr. Shea.
Yeah. So, on the agenda, there's a year in review under my category. So, I, I just typed up a quick project listing, one-page project listing, give you an idea of the things that were completed in fiscal year '25, and things we will be working on to complete in fiscal year '26. So, we, we implemented, implemented a new access control system here at the high school, a new piano lab, a new weight room. We had a very large IT switch replacement project that we completed. Auditorium projector replacement and system upgrade was completed. Sound systems in the gym and cafeteria were replaced. We had installed 20 new, we replaced 20 security cameras throughout the district. We now have a new camera, security camera, camera video management system, which is cloud-based. You know, we can access it by phone, which is great. We started this year with installing touch views for the high school. We installed 18 of them, 320 Chromebooks. We just, we got ready, updated, and distributed. Those are for the third and eighth grades. The Wi-Fi, the access point replacement project, that's, that's about 90% completed, so we're working on that, still completing that. We got a new box truck this year, and a new plasma cutter, cutter slash engraver. So, those are some of the bigger projects that we've completed this year. Next year, we're looking to install a new kiln and ventilation for the art room. We're going to continue with the touch views for the high school, again, another 320 Chromebooks. We're going to replace the auditorium stage floor. We're looking to install a new intrusion alarm system, replacing 11 security cameras. We're looking at the possibility for license plate cameras. Mitchell School LED sign, we need to get that installed this year. The Mitchell School window and door project, the windows were completed, the doors, two out of the eight were completed. We had a little problem with welding and fire alarms, so we had to put that on hold until the school ended.
Where would the license plate cameras go? I mean, on license plate, but where, which vehicles?
Oh, would go in the parking lot, so we could take a look at license plates.
Yeah, it's actually, we had, we trialed one on the, on the road coming in. So, so what happens? We have cameras in a parking lot, but if something happens, if there's an accident, or, you know, someone's car gets stained, or kids throw trash, we can zero in on the license plate, so we have a hard time identifying. But, if we have a camera that I, that picks up license plates as the cars come and go, we would be able to take that footage from the parking lot camera, the time, the make and model, and we could get zero in on the license plate. So, all, all it does is identify the license plate. There are license plate cameras that are hooked into the registry and things like that. This isn't anything like that. This just takes a picture and records the license plate.
During, during one of the safety, physical safety walks, Gordon, Gina, myself, and then the individual building principals, the constant replacement and updating of technology, specifically regarding cameras, was something that was touched upon fairly regularly. I, I know that we kind of have a plan here to continue to do those things. Is that at every school that we're doing those?
Well, Central School has all new cameras. Mitchell School, I would say probably 95% all, all new cameras. All the, a lot of the cameras here are, are new, most of the hotspots.
Yep.
But, we do have some points outside.
You don't need to tell them where they are.
Yeah. Outside, that are not covered, because those cameras are not working. So, those are the ones we're focusing on.
But, I guess it's, it's just maintenance is kind of what I'm getting at. Like, these are constant, you know, needs, because technology changes and so forth. And if I remember right, the kiln, that was a safety issue, if I remember right, it was...
The kiln, the ventilation?
Ventilation for the kiln.
It's definitely a safety issue.
Yeah. So, a lot of what you're presenting is a lot of maintenance and kind of upkeep, and, I want to make sure that we continue down that road, because if we don't, the buildings get old really fast. So, thank you for doing that. I don't know if there's a playbook, or a plan, or, but whatever it is, we need to make sure that we do that, especially with, you know, the possibility of the Central School building project. So, to me, I love what we're doing as far as the maintenance and the upkeep and so forth. So, I just want to make sure we continue, continue that.
I do have a, a, a plan, five-year plan.
Excellent.
I can send it out if you'd like to see it again.
Great. Thank you.
And if I remember correctly, the Central School playground, that was funded through ARPA, right?
Yes.
Okay. Was the Mitchell School sign ARPA as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And the Mitchell School windows and doors.
That's ARPA, too. Okay.
The, the Central School playground, most of the equipment was installed. We're just waiting for the wheelchair swing and the ADA mats, which are, are now in. We were just waiting for school to end before they come and install them.
Any idea of when the Mitchell School LED sign will?
I have to check with Brian Kylie.
That was, if it wasn't on the list tonight, I was going to ask, so I'm glad it's there.
It's beautiful.
And then, I was just curious about the auditorium stage floor. Which school is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Finance report is the packet I handed out today. Page one is the budget status update of where we are as of 6/18/2025. My estimate.
John, do you have another copy?
Yeah.
I have two. Is it the same as the one that was in the packet, or is it?
Oh, was there one in the packet?
I didn't get one in the packet.
I didn't either.
There shouldn't be one in the packet, because it was just a sweet finish.
Oh, maybe I added it to my packet, then. I, I just gave it to her.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, John and Gina.
Salary, top line, row one, we have a budget of $21,169,000. I'm expecting the total expense to end up at $21,53,000. So, I am estimating an available balance of $116,343. Though, positive available balance means we're under budget. Non-salary, based upon our general ledger system, which takes into account expense, what we've already expensed, and what we've encumbered or have been billed for but have not paid yet, I'm expecting, and that's, that's line 13, an overall negative balance Now, that takes into account $525,000 of circuit breaker, $119,000 of reserve relief circuit breaker, $647,000 of fiscal year '25 circuit breaker, $309,955 of extraordinary relief circuit breaker. So, that, those amounts that I just named, circuit breaker are already included in that number.
Okay.
So, that's a negative balance of $144,941. Grad, other estimated expenses that are not, we haven't been billed yet and have not encumbered. Graduation, I, I talked to the main office. We shouldn't get, be receiving any more bills for graduation. Spring athletics, busing, and officials, we, we'll be getting additional busing and possibly official referee expenses that need to be paid. Legal, we're still expecting another month's worth of legal expenses. Early college, I'm trying to figure that, where the billing is for early college, but we haven't received any bills yet from the, the colleges, so we're, we're trying to track that down. We're estimating an additional expense of $28,000 for that. The year-end audit will be another $5,000. Website redesign, that's something I had on, on prior presentations to you, but we've, we've paid that. And curriculum associates iReady, that's the pay, we've already made payment one of two. This is the second and final payment for iReady. And I have other expenses. I have another line for other expenses. I always try to keep $40,000 available, because, you know, you get copier bills at the last minute. You know, a lot of different bills can come in at the last minute that we haven't prepared for, so I try to keep a $40,000 balance there. So, if you, if you take into account this additional $160,000, the non-salary budget will have a negative available balance of $305,367. Now, later, I will be asking you to approve the special ed reserve, taking into the special ed reserve account into our budget of $206,219. That would reduce the non-salary negative balance to $99,147. So, if salary is at a, under budget $116,000, and non-salary ends up at, over budget $99,000, I'm estimating that we would end up, overall, under budget by $17,196.
Then, would you take that remaining $17,000 and change in free pay anything?
If, if we, if we gets to that point, yes.
Thank you.
Hoping it gets $17,196.
Okay.
Nice work.
All right. Next page. Revolving fund balances. So, I did a comparison from, I, I believe the last time I presented to you was March 19th, the revolving fund. So, in green is where we stand currently with revolving fund balances. So, if you look at the second line, circuit breaker, we have a negative $169,273. At year-end, that will be zero, because we are expecting $169,273 to be paid at the end of June. So, that would be zero. Circuit breaker extraordinary relief is zero. Circuit breaker reserve relief is zero, which was all expected. School choice, right now, is at almost $780,000. And I put a reminder, just that we committed $250,000 of that to next year's budget. Athletic fund is in a positive balance of $14,981. Preschool is, has a positive balance, but there are still four weeks of payments for staff that need to come out of that. So, about $80,000 will be coming out of that, so that will drop that down about $40,000. Special ed tuition, didn't revolving, is a $60,000 balance. We will be paying another $15,000 salaries out of that, so that will drop that down to $45,000. School building rental has a balance of $8,000 right now. We've got about $30,000 that, where we have billed or will be billing, so that revenue will be coming in. So, that, that's good. That'll get us at a good starting point for next fiscal year, in case of any emergencies that come up. Busing fees, that balance is at $31,517. If you remember, in the fiscal year '25 budget, we moved some of the busing to the busing, the busing out of the operating fund to the busing revolving fund. So, that's why that had dropped, has dropped down to $31,000. Before and after-school care is a balance of two, almost 250. There are some entries that still have not been made to that account yet. I reclass custodial expenses and finance, some of the finance work into that fund out of the operational budget. Little Vikings is at almost $164,000, and that, that's high, because the expenses will be incurred this summer, so that will drop down. So, that shows you kind of where we are from a couple of months ago, and then below, it's just where we are today compared to prior, prior years. And, and Aaron, I, I know this is all kind of new to you, so pages three through 12, I, I gave you some additional information. Sometime, we can meet and walk through all this stuff, but revolving funds, page three, page three through, through six are the regulations for the revolving funds that we just discussed, the law that allows you to have these funds, and what money can be spent for. Page seven, eight, nine, what comes up all the time is what can we spend money, what can we spend school choice money on? Seven, eight, nine will give you an idea of what we can spend school choice funding on. And pages 10, 11, 12 give you a primer on circuit breaker. I will be quizzing you at the next.
Wonderful. I look forward to it.
I think, I think we should take this information, that's really good information, and put it into the new member packet, so that the new members...
That's actually a great column.
Yeah.
Yeah, when the new members get it, they can look at this also.
That's a great column.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope, I think that's great information.
So, the, the, last item is the special ed reserve fund. As I discussed, and hopefully, if you remember, extraordinary relief circuit breaker, I budgeted a little over $600,000, I was expecting. Because of all the schools that applied for this, the state ran out of funding, so pretty much gave everyone 50% of what, what would have been expected. So, we only received $306,000, $309,000 instead of the over $600,000. Had we received the $600,000, I wouldn't be asking for the special ed reserve to take that into operating budget. that into operating budget, because I didn't. That is why I am requesting you to vote to bring in the special ed reserve into operating budget. In order to do that, it requires the school committee to vote and the select board to vote, which they have on their agenda, their agenda for next month.
I'll make a motion.
It's in the action items.
Is it in?
Yeah.
Perfect, sorry about that.
That's okay. Any questions for John?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Next, we have the school committee subcommittee, school committee subcommittees that have met since last meeting. The subcommittee for superintendent's evaluation met this past Monday.
Yes, we did, and went well.
I think.
And Gina was there, too.
Yeah. And she's put together a great little packet for us that.
Yeah, we, I think, first, we wanted to make sure we were in agreement with regards to formatting. Prior times, maybe the formatting had taken on a different kind of approach, but I think we all agreed that we wanted to make sure that the format was clear and concise, and we, I think we all agreed with regards to per MASC recommendations, we limit the number of.
Indicators.
Indicators, key indicators and so forth. So we touched upon them, and we wanted to make sure it was all alignment with the, our goals and so forth. And Gina put together a phenomenal.
And we decided to stay with SuperVal or Supereval, the software.
Yeah, I think for $3,000, I know somebody's trying to make sure that we.
That's a need.
That's a need, right.
We just cut seven, 790, 790.
And we agreed to a one-year review of the goals due April, early April, so we could make sure that the evaluation is done for our May.
Before election day.
Before election day.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think what Gina put together was fantastic for us to review, so I think.
It'll be a one-year.
Yep, one-year due in April.
Gina, would you like to talk about it?
Sure.
Yeah, please.
So what I have in front of you, and I know three of the four members are here.
Sorry, this is all for me.
So the first part of the packet is the three goals that I identified for the year, the first one being a professional practice goal, it's the new superintendent induction, so it talks about the key actions and sort of the benchmarks that you'll be able to see. The second goal is a student learning goal, and it's around the data decisions that are made based on data conversations that we have, looking at district assessments and working with the administrators on goal setting to monitor progress, but then also to identify strategies and hopefully move success in the right direction. The third goal is a district improvement goal, and this is kind of wrapping together as I work with the leadership team on developing those goals, developing a system in place for us to analyze data, make decisions based on that data. It will actually help us to create a district improvement plan to go forward the next three years. So those are three overarching goals that I have. The next thing that we talked about is the DESI's Evaluation System for Superintendent, which has four standards, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And then under those four standards, there are indicators. And then there could be anywhere between four and six indicators, and then, and those are what are labeled with letters. And then underneath those indicators are elements. So there could be two to four different elements under each indicator. So the subcommittee was very helpful in helping to narrow down which ones we're going to be focused on. So what you see in front of you are the ones that were chosen. We chose two under instructional leadership, assessment and evaluation. We chose one under management and operations, which is scheduling and management information systems. We chose three under family and community engagement, engagement, sharing responsibility and communication. And we chose one under professional culture, which is continuous learning. So then, when you go into the next section, you'll see, the next page there is where I've broken down where, what the standard is, what the indicator is, the element, and then I've put in what my key actions are going to be. It's the page right after, I'm still under standard.
Oh, okay.
This page.
It's just the second page.
Gotcha.
And so I've bulleted the key actions that will be done, and then I've shared with you what the evidence is going to be and the timeline for when that evidence will be shared. So some of it, there's dates that the evidence will be shared, some of it will be ongoing, especially if it's agendas or professional development that we're doing, or monitoring that we'll be doing over the course of the year. So then we can decide how often you want me to come back and share with the committee, but it should be sort of like a growing document as the year goes on. And that's where Supereval will come into play, because you'll see my uploaded evidence on there, and it will give you an opportunity to kind of monitor and us to have conversations if there are certain things that haven't happened by the timeline and maybe some rationale behind that, or if there were things that maybe took a little bit of a different direction in the reasons why that has happened. What I've also identified is those three overarching goals and how those show up in these standards as well. So some of these key actions are not connected to the goals, but there are other responsibilities that I'll be taking on, but these goals are also reflected within the elements of the standards. So I just did that for all of them, I think maybe there's 11. 10. So there's 10 standards that I'll be addressing, or 10 elements that I'll be addressing, and I've identified the actions that will be taking place, as well as the evidence that you'll see, the actual tangibles that you'll be able to see, and the timeline in which you'll see those. And then lastly, in the packet, is the rubric, so that as you see my evidence and make determinations as to how I've successfully accomplished the goals that I've set and the standards, you'll be able to tell what is considered unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient and exemplary. And based on the evidence that I upload, you'll be then able to make a determination.
Great job.
Very well put together.
Excellent.
I just have one, one question, I don't know, it may be in here and I may have just missed it quickly, but one of the things that I think's important is, oh wait, maybe I just found it. So I see there's a principal and directors conduct one formal mid-year review of the student achievement goals with the superintendent. But is there, is there an evaluation process, so it's like a trickle-down that like the assistant superintendents reviewed, the business managers reviewed?
Yes, so within here, goals will be set, so collaborative goal-setting sessions will happen. Each of the principals, as well as the directors, will establish their goals. I'll have them have a minimum of one student learning goal and one professional practice goal. Their goals may or may not be directly aligned to this data, but because my goal is on data, I'm going to meet with them at least once in the middle of the year and once at the end of the year to see how they've tracked that data that they've been collecting through the conversations that they've had with teachers. I'm hopeful, and I want to obviously give them some flexibility, but I'm hoping that their, their goals, they're going to choose goals that directly align with my goals. So if my goal is on making sure that they have these data meetings in place and that they have the forms completed, and that they're looking at the strategies that are being implemented and seeing how that impacts the scores, it only makes sense that they may choose that to do as their goals, too.
And can you utilize the Supereval system to evaluate others?
I believe so.
Okay, good.
I know when it was discussed last year, I didn't get into it too much to know, but if I can set up my goals in it, then multiple people can do that as well.
Good, okay, excellent, thank you.
So we're going to put Gretchen to work while we're getting everybody trained.
It will be nice to use it.
I was going to say, it'll be nice to use it.
Yeah. Any, well, you guys are all in the subcommittee meeting, so.
Good job for whipping all that extra stuff up.
Yeah, that was impressive.
I knew I had faith in you.
Put that pressure on me, do you think you can have it in two days?
Okay, next, we have the 2025-2026 school calendar, just with an updated format. It was previously approved in March of 2025, so.
Nothing's changed as far as any of the dates or information. It was sort of a central office conversation as far as how friendly it was, and so Erica Christie had actually played around with formatting. I think we had six versions to choose from.
At least.
Yeah.
This looks much easier on the eyes, I will agree with that, yeah. The other one was tough. Then we have our committee member standing subcommittee list, we will table that because we need to get two more members, and so we'll do that hopefully in our August meeting. Then we have the school committee draft dates for the 25-26 school year. So the only thing that we'll have to do is add the July 14th date to that list. And that meeting would start at 5:30.
One thing that actually Jen picked up on, the budget presentation, it's scheduled for a Wednesday. Wednesday is March 18th.
Oh, okay.
So whether you want it Tuesday, March 17th, or Wednesday, March 18th.
Probably Tuesday. I think we ended up switching it for some, I don't know what the reason was that we switched.
I think this year it was switched because of some conflict.
Yeah. And which meeting you said, was that 5:30?
The July 14th, we need to add that one. I'm fine with it on Tuesday for the budget presentation.
I'm fine with it.
St. Patrick's Day, but.
It's going to be Wednesday, this, March 17th.
Tuesday, yeah.
And one thing we also talked about was adding another meeting in, in April, or the end of April, after the 14th or in early May, because of having to do the superintendent evaluation stuff. And, and having a last meeting right before the reorg meeting, like a last meeting before the election day. Because we have to do, we have to do the evaluation, but then we have to also give it to her at a public meeting. So we need to have another meeting in there.
Okay.
And I think, I think having, having one meeting a month in August, September, and November and December is fine, but I'm going to put it out there that I think we should add some other couple, a couple extra meetings.
For what purpose?
Because one meeting a month doesn't seem like enough. I feel like we can get more done and not have as long of a meeting as if we have two meetings a month, but not every single month. There are months that we don't need two meetings. I know I'm beating a dead horse.
You are.
I, I'll agree that I think adding a meeting in between the April 14th meeting and the May 19th meeting makes sense. It feels as though it's lining up to be April 28th, that's kind of two weeks after the April 14th meeting, and that's two weeks prior to kind of like the reorg meeting, so that does feel like it's a good timeframe. That would give us a total of, with July.
Is that enough, wait, is that enough time for us to get the information by the 14th and then have the superintendent evaluation subcommittee meet, and then have the open meeting on the 28th?
I feel yes, because the way that the Supereval software is, is we're not going to, unless we wait till the last minute to populate it all, we're, the intent is for us to populate it throughout the entire year, and then it kind of builds and so forth. So to me, at that point, it's really kind of taking a look at what we've, what we've entered, what's been collected, and then just kind of a brief discussion with regards to it.
Yeah, it's just an overview, we'll be tracking it the whole year anyways.
Right.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, that still gives us 13 more meetings between now and May 19th, so I feel as though that's.
And the goal going to one meeting a month, so that in that other alternative weeks, you could have your subcommittee meetings and, you know, I mean, I know starting in really heavy in January through March, budget subcommittees pretty much once a week that we're meeting, so.
Yep.
And I think if something comes up where there's a topic that we need to have another, we just add it.
I will agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or again next year.
You got one, you got one extra meeting. Actually, you got two, we added one in July and one in.
Yeah.
I don't think we've.
Okay, so we'll have, so Michael will update this, then?
Yes.
So do we agree April 28th is a good, good one?
It's fine with me.
And do you want to choose a July meeting for next year, or do you want him to wait on putting that in?
You know, why would you, you know, the answer's yes, of course he wants to add the July meeting, right?
Well, this year we're doing it July, so I didn't know if he wanted to make sure.
I think, I think that we should, and it, but it should be, like I said, just a business only meeting, unless there's other topics that come up that we have to address, but a quick.
They got three meetings.
And I'm fine with, I mean, if you want to look at your schedules, when people typically take vacations of a certain weeks or whatever.
Well, in the past, have we always just taken the, anything left over and then talked about it at the first August meeting? Like if there was any budget stuff and stuff, you know, like that kind of thing?
It just doesn't feel right to me that the central office is open and business is happening and we're not meeting to sign off on payroll warrants and AP warrants, and if they're working, we should be working.
Fair.
I figured it's one, one night for like 30 minutes, 45 minutes, we'll come in, I'll miss you all too much if I don't see you for two months.
I think the, I think the other part of that, and this is where we'll need some assistance is, is at least getting on a consistent subcommittee meeting schedule. And we know that there's plenty of, there's the busy seasons on some of these ones, but I would say that that's something that we just want to make sure we're mindful of that, having consistent subcommittee meetings for those areas that need consistent meetings.
No, that's fair, yeah. So once we have a full board and we reduce the committees, we can, that's a great next step.
I think that that would be the next step.
Yep, I agree. Okay.
Would it still be on Tuesdays, if there are certain, our secondary block of the month that the meetings will be?
For?
For subcommittee meetings or regular meetings?
Regular ones.
The, they're mostly on Tuesdays.
What?
Second. It's generally second, but August 19th doesn't feel like the second, August.
I'd say they're mostly the third.
It's actually mostly the third, right?
Yeah.
Mostly the third.
Okay, it's mostly the third.
It's very rarely the first of the month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So keeping with that pattern, it looks like July 21st?
Oh, 26.
26.
Okay.
Want me to have Michael add that?
Yes, please, he should add that and then the April 28th.
I have that?
Yep.
And then the budget presentation's going to be on Tuesday, March 17th?
Mm-hmm.
And he'll add July, or would he add that?
Actually, no, because that's for this, oh no, he would, because that's the next fiscal year. Yeah, or next, yeah.
Yep.
July, what was the date next year?
21.
July 21st.
So next year's the other 21st, this year's the 14th. Okay.
And I'm sorry, 6 o'clock meetings?
Yes.
With the exception of this July 14th is 5:30?
Correct.
Okay, and then that budget and presentation, it says 6:30, did you want that to be added?
I'm sure we do that so that the flocks of people. I'm sure we do that so that the flocks of people can get out of work and make it to the presentation. We could probably move it to 6 o'clock.
I would agree.
Yeah, I think we should move that to 6.
Yeah, be consistent. Makes it easier for everyone.
Mm-hmm.
And do you want to maintain the lecture hall? Or I know the auditorium was double booked. I don't know, is it typically challenging that time of year? I know Mr. EBHS and Drama are heavily involved in preparing for their events in March. I didn't see a problem with the lecture hall, there's plenty.
Lecture hall's fine.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah. Okay, that is all set. Then we have the Reed's Collaborative Quarterly Report, which was enclosed. I don't know if there's any discussion around this.
Nope.
I read it. And then we have the contract for, new contract with the new school physician, Dr. P., I will call him.
Yes, Dr. Costa is, actually, he relieved us of the stress of trying to pronounce his first name. So I shared with Mr. Pika earlier, the contract, the agreement in your packet, I worked with John Foskett from Nick Domenello's office on creating the agreement. I had Mr. Pika sign it, and then when I sent it off to Dr. Costa, he had a request for a change under, on the third page, under the indemnification. There was the language in there, it looks like one, two, three, four, maybe five lines down, about the physician's acts, errors, or omission in performance. He asked that the language be changed to negligence because that's how the language reads in his malpractice insurance. So when I connected with Mr. Foskett, he had no problem in changing that to negligence, and so a new agreement has been created. Mr. Pika actually signed that earlier, so, and I've already sent that over to Dr. Costas, and he has signed. So we're all set to go as of July 1st, because his first order of business will be the athletic physicals for our athletes.
Any questions?
So he'll actually come here to the school?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's great. Okay, we'll move to actions required by the committee. Action is required after review on payroll warrant, 47 PS dated May 21st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and second. Any discussion? And votes? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, you can't.
No, sorry, abstain.
Yep, okay, so.
Fury or abstain.
So that motion passes. The next action required after review, review of payroll warrant, 49 PS dated June 4th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Fury or abstain.
Okay. Excellent. Action is required after review on accounts payable warrants, 5/28/25, pound sign 48, dated 5/21/2025. I'll entertain a motion. Thank you. A second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Actions required after review.
Can I ask you a quick question? Is it, maybe is that a typo, the 5/28/25, pound sign 48? You know, see how it's like dated whatever the date is, but then it's.
No, that's what it's on the warrant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Put it on the warrants.
I've never seen it like that before, but.
Yeah, that's weird.
Who knows? Okay. Action is required after review on accounts payable warrants, SW 50 dated June 11th, 2025. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Action is required to approve the April 15th, 2025 school committee meeting minutes. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All those, are discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Action is required to approve the May 6th, 2025 school committee meeting minutes. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Action is required to approve the May 20th, 2025 school committee meeting minutes. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think we'll, we're going to pass over the next action item because we are not going to renew the CLIRG contract. Action is required on the superintendent's goals, standards, indicators, and evaluation timeline.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Action is required to approve the memorandum of agreement and collective bargaining agreement between the East Bridgewater Education Association, EBEA, and the East Bridgewater School Committee effective September 1st, 2025 through August 31st, 2028. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
At your table is the salary scale that goes with it.
Oh, yes, yeah, Gina did hand out the salary scale because that wasn't in our packet. Quickly, I will just, one last time, really thank the East Bridgewater Education Association. It was a very professional and successful bargaining exercise that we went through, so glad we got it all resolved, and we can all move on. Next, action is required to approve the employment agreement with Dr. Costa as the school physician effective July 1st, 2025.
Make a motion.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Action is required by the school committee pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 13E, to transfer $206,219.19 from account number 22-330-602-5961, Special Education Reserve Fund, to account number 1-300-665, Special Education Tuitions Private Programs for Fiscal Year 2025. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Actions required to surplus an inoperable Jamison laser engraver from the East Bridgewater Junior/Senior High School. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That wraps up our action items. We will be.
I think, you know what I think? I think instead of those two, since we're going to have two brand-new people and we